Called to order at 8:31 a.m. on this Tuesday, January the 21st. As usual, we will start with our Chaplain prayer and pledges. We have Chaplain Marcella Jenkins here to lead us in both. Would you please come forward, please? Good morning. Why don't somebody pull that out and get the microphone positioned correctly, please?
Thank you.
Is it on?
Yes.
The three button on?
Yes.
Okay.
We're good now. Can everyone bow their heads? Father in heaven, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insight, and we welcome your presence among us, guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved. We trust you and your perfect wisdom, and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. In James 1:5, it says, "If any of you lack wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously to all without reapproach, and it will be given him." We claim this promise as we start our meeting and trust in your provision. We pray for our Honorable Mayor Brenda Gunter, this council, our first responders, and this city. May the strength of God sustain us; may the power of God preserve us; may the hand of God protect us; may the way of God direct us; may the love of God go with us this day and forever. And God, I ask for a very, very special favor: Please warm up the weather. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. The pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And then it went dark.
I thought we were gonna watch a video.
Not yet. We will move into the public comment portion of the agenda. Members of the public may raise issues or concerns not listed on the regular agenda during this time. To participate, please sign in with a city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. When speaking, citizens must speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating your name and address, or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Heather, do we have people offering public comment today?
We have one, Jamal Schumpert.
Okay.
Jamal Schumpert, single-member district number three. Today, ma'am, I'm up here to talk to you about some opportunities we may have to close the gap between the 35,000 to maybe 55,000, and maybe-
Jamal, could I ask you to speak a little louder? Because with the mask, some of your sound is diminished, so we can't hear as well as we'd like.
Okay. Yeah, I'm here today to discuss some programs, maybe trade programs, that you offer your out-of-college students, so that they don't have to go through the workforce. The workforce, you have to be low-income. That doesn't really work for a lot of your citizens who make over $30,000, $35,000. But they don't want to make 30,000, 35,000. Maybe they want to make 50,000, or maybe they want to make 70,000. That's why I think that it's the city, not necessarily responsibility, but it's an opportunity for us to go in and use Howard College's license, or Angelo State's license, to do educational training programs, to give these people certificates, so that they can go up the ladder, from 30,000 to 40,000, 40,000 to 50,000, 50,000 to 60,000, with different trade skills. And we'll also be able to use that as an asset, to bring a lot of companies here to San Angelo. Because if we don't have the workforce for the companies, they're not going to be looking at us, no matter how much incentives we give. The next thing I had to talk about was the rate study. I don't think in December, we should have passed the rate study on the consent agenda item. I believe we should have discussed the rate study. A lot of important things are in that rate study over the next 10, 20, 30 years, to pay for our water. And if we don't discuss that as a community, then we're really making decisions, maybe seven to nine people. And I think it's very important that we discuss some of those capital improvement project plans. Maybe we need a whole new water system. Every five or six years, $100 million worth of equipment and expenses. That's what I was looking at. And on the animal shelter. One thing I had a question of, I don't think it's, is it our policy for one animal service worker to go out and check on 12 dogs, 10 dogs, multiple dogs? I think that was a question not really addressed during that animal shelter meeting. And the fact that we created an ad hoc committee, isn't that exactly, it's not an ad hoc committee, but it is a committee, the Animal Committee, Animal Services Committee, they have the exact same powers as the ad hoc committee. Maybe restore some of the Animal Services Board Committee's powers, and maybe some of the suggestions they give y'all, we can work on. I'm almost out of time, I have a few more things. Outside of that, Parks and Recreation, I'd advise y'all to look at their meeting. They are implementing some wonderful things for San Angelo. Thank you.
Is that the only public comment for today? All right. With that, we will now move into our consent agenda. Larry, is there an item you'd like to pull off of the consent agenda? Karen? Item K. Lucy?
No, ma'am.
I'm gonna pull item L. Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Tommy? May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda items A through J? So moved by Harry, seconded by Karen. Any public comment concerning items on the consent agenda, which are items A through items J?
No.
Any public comment?
None.
We'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, with the exception of items K and L, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing all ayes, the motion to pass the consent agenda, with the exception of K and L, has been passed. We will now move into the consent agenda K. Consider resolution accepting the donation of equipment from MHMR for the San Angelo Police Department. Karen, you're on.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I would just like to ask Chief Griffith to come forward and give us a little bit of an expansion on that short sentence. Tell us what's coming.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all very much. Thank you, Mayor. Somebody left the air conditioner on outside, I don't think I noticed this the last few days, so we're hoping to get warmed up. I wanted to just come forth and say a big thank you to West Texas Guidance and Counseling and MHMR. It's imperative, I think, as a community, that we highlight when nonprofits step up and help us in our public safety measures. And they have put forth a grant through the assistance of West Texas Guidance and Counseling, and MHMR is going to be fulfilling that grant. And that grant's gonna provide us with iPads that we can use in the field to directly communicate with those that are in need of mental health services, that can directly communicate with staff of MHMR. They're also providing for the services for those iPads, so it's gonna be in between 28 and 33, depending on our pricing. By that way, we can deploy those in real-time, and help people that maybe are falling in between the direct crisis, where we take them to services, or help them, talk them into maybe going to the diversion center, which they've worked on diligently, to help keep people out of jail, out of hospitals, and get them to the mental health that they need. So I wanted to highlight that and say thank you to them, and say thank you to Craig Thomason, Assistant Chief, for working through this and getting it done. I also wanted to provide y'all guys with some coins from the police department. Our coins are important to law enforcement. We give those out, and it really means a lot, means we respect you. So thank you, guys, very much. And if I could, I'm gonna ask, can we give them a hand? Is that possible? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Craig, would you like to say anything? Craig? Craig, one, and Craig, two. Oh, sorry. Both of you could speak, should you want to.
I was just going to expand just a bit. This grant that we got was something we submitted last February, and we just received notice, what was it, mid-?
December.
December. And it backdated to October, so it's kind of one of those words. It is a state crisis intervention grant through the Office of the Governor, to support projects that promote the prevention, intervention, and reduction of crime and violence, and provide essential crisis services to at-risk populations within Texas communities. It's federal funds, it's authorized under the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act, for the grant opportunity partnering with West Texas Counseling, and then also with San Angelo Police Department. And what we want to do is ensure that individuals in the Contra Valley experiencing crisis have access to wraparound services, to avoid preventable inpatient hospitalization, jail, law enforcement interactions, or use of other restrictive treatment due to mental health crisis. And so what we've done, West Texas Counseling took the lead on the grant, they wrote it, we partnered with it, but they wrote it for us, and like I said, we just got it, and we're very excited to be able to get this connectivity to our officers out on the front line.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Would anybody else like to ask a question, or like more information? We're thrilled. Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of item K, please? Karen has made a motion, a second by Lucy. Any public comment? We'll take a vote. Gubby fast. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Item L, consider approving policies recommended by the Public Art Commission for, one, artwork donation and loan policy and application, and two, de-assess it. I'm not even sure what this word is, but I'll try here. Is it in the dictionary?
Deassessing.
Yeah. Yes, policy. Carl, I want you to talk about that, because we've had a policy in place. There were several people who were on the Public Art Commission several years ago, who said we already had a policy. So what's the change in the policy, and why is there a request to change the policy?
The guidelines that were worked up by the Public Art Commission some years ago were really geared towards the city taking an active stance, having funds to actually commission artwork, and consider that artwork. So the guidelines that were passed then basically supported that. What we've experienced the last several years is that we mostly, the Public Art Commission, reviews and considers art that's being donated or loaned. If you think about the Sunken Garden Park, where the Sculpture Garden is, we worked the Museum of Fine Arts, and Mr. Richard Salmon, who created that program, and it's, that artwork there is temporary. Other artwork has been donated by art non-commonplaces. So the guidelines that we had were really effective in being used to consider loaned or donated art. That was the reason for considering new guidelines.
I get that part. It's the part about de-assessing.
Deassessing. Well, in the research to update our guidelines, I discovered the city of Austin had this policy for deassessing. And from time to time, we have considered artwork for deassessing, so I thought, maybe we should have this already in place, in case we need to do that. That's the reason.
So basically, it's art we want to take out?
Yes, ma'am.
So why I'm concerned in questioning this, is that maybe over a year ago, maybe it's been two years, there was a sculptor, sculpture, in one of the parks, that we said was not stable, was a problem, and we needed to remove it. And I questioned why we needed to remove it. And that was two years ago, and it's still standing. So the question is, what does this policy do that the other policy didn't do?
We didn't have a deassessing policy before.
I was told we did have, that in the previous-
Not deassessing.
-Public Arts Commission, they had created, as a part of that policy, what we do when we needed to remove a piece of art or sculpture. And you're saying we didn't have anything in that policy before.
About deassessing.
Okay. So this is new.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, explain to me about the piece, the sculpture, that is still standing.
We made it safe, so it's not gonna fall on anybody. The last direction we got was to look at considering, before we take it out, could something else go in its place? And we have not made progress on that.
But you stabilized it, so it's just fine as it is, staying where it is?
Yes.
It is for now. The other thing y'all asked us to do was look into, I think, through Central, through the groups there, was there a way to get it recommissioned, to blah, blah, blah? So yes, it is stabilized for now. Is that gonna last forever? No. So it still needs to be, in my opinion, addressed in some way in the future.
But it's safe, and it's there, and it'll be there till it's not safe, is that correct?
I can't pronounce that.
Just asking.
We have no plans to do anything with it at this point.
That's what I want to hear. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments from Council? Larry?
Yes, ma'am. My problem with this is it doesn't include donors and potential family members. It goes immediately to sale, and the person that donated it doesn't, isn't given an opportunity to perhaps retrieve the artwork.
And the deassessing policy?
Yes.
I thought that was in there.
No, sir.
I'll relook at that and make sure that that's in there.
The other, the other part of it is, and I love that mural of Elmer Kelton that's on the wall there, but someday, that's gonna be chipped, and the weather's gonna affect it, and all that kind of things. If I was a member of the Kelton family, and I drove by there to find it, it's whitewashed, I would be extremely upset. So I think, in some cases, there might be a logical reason to contact family.
The paint that was used for Elmer Kelton, as many of the other murals, was paint that was to last 25 to 30 years. So it might happen. We'd probably need a policy when it does happen. But also, once it's given, it's given, right?
I'm just saying, the opportunity doesn't have to follow that course.
And how would you take a mural off of the wall? Just asking.
Well, in my concern, that's, the concern I had was with the family in that case. I'm not talking about returning it to the donor. What I'm saying is, I think it would be, well, I'll say rude, if in fact, we have that mural up there, and it's deteriorating, and we don't contact the family to notify them that we're gonna paint over the wall.
One of the issues with those murals are, is the following. Multiple, multiple people donated to have those things done. So the family didn't necessarily donate money towards it, but many people did donate money, and there were fundraisers to pay for it. So the family, quote, doesn't own it, if you will. The organization that oversees the murals owns the murals.
I realize that.
Okay, so, just a point of information.
And to clarify, this policy is about public art on public property. Some of those murals are on private property.
Correct.
So it didn't get consideration of the Public Art Commission.
Right. And I think a large, bunch of them are on private property.
They are.
Private buildings. So really, the city at that point would really have no say if they chose to paint over it or not. So those, those on the private buildings was a partnership between the owner and, what was the mural group called? So really, the city isn't, other than, so in some cases, we won't have any authority over it.
It's a good question.
I was just using it as an example. There's obviously other pieces of artwork around town that are city property, that potentially could fall into this, into this problem.
Any other questions or comments for Carl? Then may I have a motion for approval of item L?
Moved to approve.
Lucy moved, Harry seconded. Public comment?
None.
No? Take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Excuse me? Oh, one vote of a nay. I'll correct my statement. Six to one. Moving on to the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. To participate, please sign in with a city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Advocants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item 6A, consider approving the purchase of 805 West Avenue N. from CVI Group LLC, and Steel City Investment LLC, for purchase price and closing costs not to exceed $595,000, utilizing general fund balance, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Sarah, you're on.
Good morning. Carl and I are here to, if you have any questions regarding the purchase of the property, or the future of the purchase of this property. Is there any questions?
Counsel, do you have questions or requests for more information? Karen?
I see the Friends of Fairmont have gathered in substantial numbers this morning, and I want to be sure that they have correctly understood this initiative, and have no questions themselves. I realized they needed to probably sign up in advance, but is that group satisfied with this, and?
That would require public comment, and somebody to sign up ahead of time.
I know that. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from counsel? Comments? Then we are ready to have a motion for approval of item A. Karen made a motion, seconded by Harry. Public comment concerning this item at this point? None. So we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item B, consider approving the following items pertaining to the 2025 Annual Seal Coat Project. One, entering into an inter-local agreement with Tom Green County, and amending the fiscal year 2024-25 budget for the corresponding reimbursed expenses. And two, awarding ES-02-25, 2025 Annual Seal Coat Project to Clark Construction of Texas Incorporated in the amount of $6,635,697.39, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Patrick, you are on.
Good morning, Mayor. And Counsel, just real quick, we recently received our bids back from our 2025 Annual Seal Coat request for bids, and Clark Construction was the low bidder for that, that award. The reason we're here on regular agenda today is because, I think, this is the fourth year in a row now that we have partnered with the county to get some economy of scale, so we absolutely got that. The Clark Construction gave us a very favorable bid. We verified all of their materials, and all of their sources, as well as their references, so we're confident that they'll do a good job for us. We are partnering with the county, like I said, so the county's portion is gonna be about 2.1 million, the city's is gonna be about 4.4 million. It's on regular agenda, because we have a budget amendment to receive that money back from the county into our budget this year, so it needed to be presented to you, you all, with that budget amendment, to Counsel, for that amendment to the budget.
Do we normally do an amendment to the budget at the time we approve the expenditure? Because usually, it's a second presentation by Tina, in terms of a budget amendment.
For the Seal Coat process, there is, or, there is an allowance, that if we take the budget amendment along with the award of the bid, that we can do it in one reading with that award. So we do have that allowance, but we also have the alternative that you spoke. So we have two methods to do that.
I'd like Tina to speak, please.
Okay.
Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. We do have included in our budget ordinance that we, if we word the caption correctly, that we can do a reading in one, do a budget amendment in one reading, along with the project. So that's why it's on the regular agenda with that caption.
Okay.
Worded that way.
All things legal. With that, may I have a motion for approval of item B?
I'd like to have a comment, please.
You sure can.
Ask a question, really.
Which we can do, after we make a motion for approval.
So move, then.
Okay. A second by Tommy. Now, would you like to ask a question or make a comment?
Thank you. Patrick?
We're official.
Clark? "Clark Construction was more than $1 million less than the other two bidders. And I heard you say that you checked all the materials and everything like that. That really concerns me, from the standpoint that you don't have three people that are, three companies that are within $100,000 or so. Are we sure that we're gonna get what we're gonna pay for on this particular item?"
Again, that's, like you said, I made that statement, because we were concerned as well, whenever we saw that, that bid, and just the discrepancy between the other two bids and Clark. So we did reach out to Clark, we had them send us their manifest for their material that they were gonna purchase, the rock, as well as the asphalt, where their sources were. They're actually using CSA materials for their rocks, so we're very well, very familiar with that. We checked their references, they've done work with Tech Stop Before, they've done work with other municipalities, and they all got, gave us good reviews on that. So at this point, we have no reason to question the product that they will give us at this point, especially for that price point.
I guess we, we just saved a million dollars. That's a good, good opportunity for the city.
That's usually a good thing.
Thank you, Harry. Other comments, questions for Patrick, from anyone on counsel? Seeing none. We've had a motion, and we have a second public comment on this item.
Jamal Schumpert.
Jamal?
Jamal Schumpert, single-member district number three. Pretty much like everything Patrick does, especially since he did the Community Connectivity Project. He's always in good favor with me. But I'm up here to discuss, maybe, the order of operations of this project. I noticed that you have some of the east side of your town being paved, which is single-member district number three, where I stay. I'm not so sure if we've done our lead and copper river revision check in that area, and if we have a major boo-boo there, where we're the ones, you know, giving our lead with cast iron pipes, that it may be a huge problem to dig up all the stuff we just paved. I would say, go check probably a few houses to make sure, a few different blocks, to make sure you don't have cast iron pipes delivered to those, those residents in that area that you're about to pave. Outside of that, I say, hey, go ahead with it. I'd love for our roads to get paved. If I'm correct, y'all have paved the roads more than any other city council twice over, two or three times over. So I continue the good job. I just, I just don't want you to have to cut up the road after you put it down, because it looks so pretty, once it's done.
We like pretty roads.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. Is that it? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. May I have a vote? All those in favor, and Larry, I'll make sure I understand your vote, before I move on, on this one. Okay. All those in favor of approving item B, say aye.
Aye.
No nos, no nays. Motion is approved, 7-0.
Thank you.
Item C, discussion and possible direction from counsel regarding the Downtown San Angelo banner campaign with locations and artwork. And today, we have Carl and Aaron to present.
Thank you, Mayor. Myself and Carl are really here just to help explain any process that y'all have questions on, of, that would have gone through city boards, like the Public Art Commission, or the Design and Historic Review Commission. But Monica Ramos, Executive Director of Downtown San Angelo, is gonna do a presentation of what those banners look like, and y'all will have had the opportunity to ask her questions, as well as her contingent that hears, that is here to support her, so I'm gonna turn it over to Monica now, so.
Good morning, Counsel.
Good morning.
So, this has been a project that we have been working on for about two years now. It's been an idea to bring this project back to life. We titled it "Celebrating Downtown," because we had a 20-year anniversary last year, and so "Celebrating Downtown" is about our organization's anniversary, but as well as how downtown has transformed over the past 20 years. And we see it continue thriving, and we want to add a little extra vibrancy to our downtown, and be able to continue to promote tourism, and provide something for our locals to enjoy as they visit downtown. The banner project isn't new to our organization. Our design committee established a banner program in 2008. It was called Walk Through Time Banners. These were red banners that were all over downtown, with a black-and-white historic photo of a building in that area from that time, and it had a small, brief description, as well as what that building was. So it paid tribute to our history of historic downtown San Angelo. We want to bring this- We want to bring this back to life, revive the banner program. Since then, these banners have weathered away. They've become torn and tattered. There might be one or two that are still up right now, so this is good timing for us to be able to remove those remaining banners and add some new banners into play. Also, with our new streetscape, this will be a complement to the streetscape and the black tie cowboy artwork. These banners have symbols of downtown as well as San Angelo. They showcase attractions, cultural activities, designations, almost anything that you can think of that describes downtown or is an attraction or an organization of downtown. We have them on these banners, and there's a total of 40 banners that we plan to have presented all across our core of downtown. The design was made with help from Media Advantage. They did a wonderful job of putting these designs together. They're playful, they're fun, they're attractive, again vibrant, something that will keep all activities of downtown top of mind when someone is driving or walking through downtown. It increases the walkability of our downtown as well as promoting all of our greater assets that we have. So we're really excited about bringing this to play and keeping everything top of mind. Keep in mind, we are also, I've mentioned this before, that we are part of the Main Street Program. And so these banners fall into play of the four-point approach that we follow, hitting design and promotion. So we're really excited to present this as well to our Main Street cities and show them what we have brought to the table. Fast Signs will install the signage for us, and Downtown San Angelo will maintain the upkeep of the banners if something were to happen to them. And as well, in the photograph, we see an example of the hardware that will match the new street lighting as well to go along with it. Do y'all have any questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am?
Because I was responsible for the previous banner program. And two things. Number one, are they the same length and size of the previous banners?
These are 24 by 52. They are vinyl, so they are pretty thick and hefty material. We have an example here that Andy is holding up.
And they were before as well, vinyl.
Yes.
So what I was told was one of the reasons that the banners were constantly coming down was the size of the banner caught the wind, and the wind in downtown or in Texas is very strong.
West Texas.
So the size of the banner, I was told, was the reason they didn't stay up. And so we're redoing them the same size as before, which was considered a problem. And then my next question is, what people really liked about the old banners was, quote, "a walk-through time." People love to see what a building looks like today versus what it looked like when it was built. And so it's, these are beautiful, but I don't see anything that reflects the renovation of what we were to what we are today. Where's the history here?
So to answer your question about the size, these are slightly larger. The previous banners were about two feet by four feet, so those were a bit smaller.
And that's my concern is because I was told the size of them before was, they were too large, and so the wind would catch them and pull them down. And so now they're larger, and I'm concerned about that.
Mayor, that's actually really great feedback that we had not heard. We can actually get with fast signs and potentially put wind slits and see how we can investigate to make sure that the wind flows through this material a little bit better. Like I said, I think that's something that we weren't aware of, but I do believe that's something we can.
It was a big issue.
Respond to.
And so we want to make sure, because we would get them, and it's expensive to put these up.
Yes, ma'am.
It's expensive because most people don't like to do it because you can't do it during normal hours. You got to do it before traffic is downtown. There's no cars on the streets or on a Sunday, and hopefully there's no cars on the street. And so we would get them up, and within 48 hours, the wind would have taken one down. Yes, there's probably some issues with the hardware being put up incorrectly, meaning what held the rod was upside down, so it didn't hold. But the biggest issue was the size and the wind. And before you go to the expense of putting all these up, we need to make sure that the wind won't take them down the next day after you put them up. And the size is larger, so I have a great concern for that. Although they look beautiful, I don't see any history here.
So in regards to history, I know Monica really wanted to highlight things to do in San Angelo today, and that was the intention of these flags. We do see that there's historical imaging on other pieces of downtown, those electrical boxes. We were part of an initiative that was exploring putting those historic pictures down a little bit lower so that people could review them, and the city, I believe, already did a lot of that downtown. So we wanted to really focus on activities people can do today so that we can just spread the word of other things besides just shopping downtown.
Because a lot of what happens in a downtown is what we call heritage tourism, and that's people who travel to town to see historic redevelopment, and they love to know history. They love to walk around and say, oh, my gosh, look at what that looked like now. Look at what it looks like. And I worry that when those boxes that you talked about are great, but there's like six of them, maybe four of them. So I like what I see. They look really nice, but I think there's still some homework to be done on these before you go to the expense of putting them all up.
We appreciate that, Mayor, and we do appreciate the historical banners that were in place. This here is present day as far as thinking in terms of marketing and marketing and promoting our downtown and making it a revitalized vibrant scene with all the entertainment, all of the locations that you can visit that have normal operating hours. Again, it showcases a bit of everything. It's a taste of the art, our culture, the Contra River, things that you can do at the Contra River, our visitor's center. It has a little bit of everything on these banners. We have talked about having a phase two of the banners so that they continue on North Chadburn to encompass the rest of our downtown area. But of course, we want to wait for that streetscape and the new lighting to come into play in that area. So incorporating some historical photography or more historical elements can be something that we can add to our second phase.
That's what people like about historic downtowns, heritage tourism. Yes, Tom?
Couple things here I'll echo. At the Coliseum, there's an entranceway, and it has a lot of the arm rods to do these banners. The first year, we went through the same problem. We said, oh, hey, those are here. We did those. We had issues with the wind. There is a solution, and y'all know this in fast signs. And Andy, you did a good job of saying you can put the wind slits in it, have them double reinforce it there. But these are one of the cheapest, most easiest ways to advertise and show that I've seen. I love seeing this project move forward, but I wanted to reiterate what Brenda said. It's, you know, while she was talking a little bit about content, these things can get torn up, but make sure you go back to fast signs and say, hey, put the wind slits in it, double reinforce the stitching. They will survive, but I will say there's a bunch of rods on a bunch of poles at the Coliseum that y'all could probably go get for free, that they'd be ready to get rid of real quick. And it takes, it takes some maintenance to take care of these, but y'all nailed it, but this is good artwork. This is going to be great. Content is always negotiable. I was fixing to say, y'all can make some adjustments here and go forward, but I love what I see. Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am. They are gorgeous. I looked at every single one of them, and it's just, they're amazing. What do you consider the lifetime on these approximately? Has the manufacturer given you any particular?
We would say from past experience, at least eight years total. Of course, if something happens to one of the banners, we'll take action and have fast signs reinstall or replace any banners that are torn or falling down.
And my second question, and we've touched on history and heritage, but I wonder if you gave any thought to having San Angelo's most famous celebrity on one of these?
Of course.
Does anybody know who that would be?
You always.
Would it be Fest? Would it be Fest?
Fest Parker. I mean, the man resurrected Davy Crockett. We wouldn't be as aware of what he did in his lifetime than what Disney did with that film with Fest Parker. I think it warrants having a poster, one of these, set up for him.
We'll definitely take that into consideration, and we will.
There's a second go around.
Yes, yes, and we'll be sure to consult with fast signs as well and make sure that everything is in its place and going to be good for us moving forward to where we have minimal maintenance and that these banners stay up as a showcase.
I spent six years doing these banners. So I know about the wind, and I know about the sun, and I know about the hardware. I've been through it all.
I want to take some bets on that eight-year number that you threw up there.
Yeah. You'd lose.
I want to make a comment.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for bringing this project back. I think it's something that downtown is going to bloom because of it, because of the fact that there's something that people can just be driving and go, oh, I've never seen this or I've never seen that. Swing by there and look at it and read the history on it. I think it's a great idea, and I hope that you do succeed, and I hope the winds stay a little down.
Thank you. The wind always blows west Texas, but.
We can hope.
Maybe we could somehow stop the wind at 306 and like do whatever.
Make them a little taller.
Because this, the wind is terrible. Thank you. They look great.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Then may I have a motion for approval?
So move.
A motion by Harry, a second by Lucy. Any public comment on this one?
No.
All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Larry, is that a yea?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item D, consider request for an appeal of the Design and Historic Review Commission denial of DD 24-15 for demolition of a structure located at 231 West Boer Guard. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This morning, we have an appeal of a DHRC Design and Historic Review Commission decision, as you said, for 231 West Boer Guard. So here on this opening thing, you can see this is in District Three, Mr. Harry Thomas. It's in the downtown, excuse me, downtown neighborhood, and it is the central business zoning district, and it has the overlay of the downtown district. You can see it is right where this black dot is here. It is right next door to two historically overlaid properties. And right here is a vacant parking lot, major intersection. Here is our annex building for the city of San Angelo. As you know, that Coenheim going one way north there and West Boer Guard being a major thoroughfare going east and west, going into the heart of the downtown. So this is the building in question. Many of you have seen this building built, and I want to say in the late 50s. You can see it has more of a facade that has kind of the faux rock or the rock that has been installed. It's got parking here on the side. You can see over to Coenheim and is just, I wouldn't say a plain building, but it is representative of that timeframe. It has got some very square and sharp facade faces. It has the glass faces. And so now I'm going to go through a series of images that also shows kind of this corridor here. And so here is at the intersection, looking to the east. You can see the subject question, subject property there. You can start to see some of the buildings behind there. You can see the downtown and see what is there adjacent from this view. Now you get just past the building, you can just see it right back here. This one is historically overlaid, and this one is historically overlaid. And as you start looking at the facades on those two, those are more of the classic early mid-century design as opposed to the more stark, squared body off as well as the faux rock facade on this design. So you can see where they start having some, where it goes, and I may have a better image of this one right here. You can start seeing, excuse me, pardon me, the curved features, which has a little more of the Art Deco style, which was from the 20s and 30s and early 40s. And then as you move into the 50s, 40s and 50s, 60s, then you start getting back to the more square style. And I talk about that because that's going to come as part of the decision-making process. You can see this building here. I suspect it's had a facade change at some point because it is stucco. That probably was not the original facade, but it has been changed over time. So as we keep going along the corridor, you can see the Ann M. Thomas Building, again, got this nice curve that kind of comes out right here, very classical Art Deco style, and then it has the arch that comes back on the top. And then the KSJT Building, which was just a very more 20s-style building, teens and 20s-style building with the, kind of the faux columns that are introduced in here and the items up at the top of the building, which is, as you get further into downtown, this is more of the style that you see. As downtown expanded, you saw the other, the other styles come out. Let's see if I have. So this image may be the better one that you can kind of see across the street. As y'all know, probably three or four years ago, there was a building that was an original building for downtown that had gotten in such disrepair, it had to be demolished across, kind of across the street. And now we have this building here that has some classic Art Deco styling at the front. The building to the right of it is more of a 60s, 70s style that has a lot of glass frontage, and that's the corridor kind of coming in on Boer Guard. The question at hand is, did DHRC make the right decision to deny the request of demolition of the structure at 231 West Boer Guard? Their vote was six zero opposing the demolition of that structure. Their reasoning was they wanted to review the site holistically. What is going to go back on that site? What will replace the building that's being removed? Because this is in the downtown district, not the historic district quite, but the downtown district. They have the authority to look at any demolition of private structures in this area. The other item is DHRC will have the authority for any redevelopment of the property of any type, whether that is a new structure, whether that's an accessory use, whether that's a parking lot. They do have the authority to make decisions on that. So in the 2021 historic survey, this structure at 23, 231 West Boer Guard was defined as it does not possess sufficient architectural or historical significant to be individually eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, and they would be a contributing resource if located within a historic district. So they would not rise to the level of a national historic place, but they are considered a contributing resource to our downtown. So the, and the next statement is, the architectural style is a medium contributor, not a high contributor, but we have high, medium, and low. It is a medium contributor to the mid-century style, while other properties adjacent are more reflective of the Art Deco and the classic modern style. So that was kind of the genesis of the report, the genesis of some of DHRC's review commission decision of how they got to, we do want to deny the demolition of this building until they see what is going to be replaced there, is what's going to be replaced there be as significant as the building that's there. So again, they did vote to deny. Staff did struggle with this, but we did recommend approval at DHRC for the demolition, and we do recommend for the demolition with two conditions today. One is secure approval from DHRC with an elevation rendering of the proposed structure for this lot and the adjacent lot. Both of those lots are owned by the same property owner. It is unknown if they're, if they're going to move forward with a structure, if they're going to put the properties up for sale. We just don't know that. But our proposal is, if it's approved to demolish this structure, they would have to go to DHRC and get whatever new structure is approved, and that goes through the color materials and everything through DHRC, and they would also need to obtain necessary permits and inspections as the permits and inspections division would require. Now, part of our challenge is, is our, our we staff, this came to us, we said, we want this to go to DHRC. We don't want to make that decision because it's very important. We had to make a decision internally of, are we, are we putting our development hat on or are we putting our downtown, historic downtown district hat on? And that can be challenging at times. And so that's our challenge here this morning, is how do we move forward with a demolition if it's, if it's allowable, but without a guarantee of anything may not, may not come back to that property? And that's the challenge we have. And Mayor, you know that as well. And so I'll turn it back to you. If you guys have questions, I'll be happy to answer what I can.
I strongly support DHRC's deny to demolish because it's bigger than, did it fit into this? Because it's bigger than, did it fit into this category or this category or this category? The number one problem we have in that district down there, all the way through Shannon, are too many empty parking lots on primary intersections. When you look at urban development, when you look at historic development, when you look at development, what you don't want are primary corners, intersections with empty lots. Because guess what happens at 6 o'clock? They're dark and they're empty. And it makes it look like you don't have anything going on. So people might not turn, make that right turn to go into the historic district because it's dark and it's empty. We should not demolish a building. We shouldn't, we cannot focus simply on, is it this decade or is it this decade? Or is it this design or is it this design? What we have to focus on is what we look like. If you take that building down, you've got a major, big piece of property that is empty. And across from it is another big empty parking lot. We have too many major intersections with empty parking lots that make us look like we're dying. We need to have development. We don't need demolishing. We need development. And this is a major intersection, which already across the street is empty. And this expansion of this parking lot, big black, big black asphalt parking lot, which will have another big black asphalt parking lot next to it.
Yes, ma'am.
We can't demolish it. We need a plan. We cannot keep taking out buildings and leaving empty parking lots because we're soon just gonna be known as a big empty parking lot. Drive around downtown, look at how many major intersections or parking lots. And you look at downtown redevelopment, the number one thing they'll tell you not to do is in your major intersections have empty lots with parking lots. This goes totally against that policy. So DHRC got it right. Do not demolish. That's my comments.
Thank you.
Yes, Harry.
Since this is in my district, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
One of which, in the background information, on multiple resource area thematic group on number 46, Princess Ice Cream Company entered in the National Register in 11/25/88.
Yes, sir.
So tell me what that means.
So this building right here is that building that was entered in 1988. It was submitted to the National Registry of Historic Places and did receive that designation. It does not have a local historic designation, but it has a national historic designation and that is that structure there. And so that is part of that history of that block. And so that's why we included that, is that block does have, these two buildings right here are locally designated. This building here has got a national designation because of the history of that building, the classic modern style that it has with the curves. And so as the National Historic Places looks at things, they look at that architectural style. And so that's why that was in there, just to give you a history of what's going on with that block.
Very good. My next comment, since the mayor's already started this, is I'm not gonna support taking this building down either until I see what may be, what kind of building may be replaced with it. So I'm gonna make a motion to deny the appeal.
Thank you, Harry, and second by Karen. Tommy, did you, Tom and Tommy, I think you both had your hands up. And I don't care who goes first. Someone take the microphone and run with it.
Age before beauty.
Okay, there you go.
So can you go back to a picture of this building, a close-up? I'm gonna disagree with y'all. All right, we're just, have a little difference of opinion here. Don't be, I think that's one of the, I don't think that's a pretty building. It reminds me of the Brady Bunch. I think it probably had shag carpeting in it, if not on the walls, a carpet wall. So I get that it, it's in a Band-Aid between what we personally view as historic structure and contemporary structure. But I think the, who owns this? First National Bank of Merton?
That's correct.
They got it. So they're stuck with a building here that nobody wants, all right? Nobody's gonna rent it. And because we make our, you know, picture of it belongs in this window, you can't do anything to it. So can they, I mean, how do they divest themselves of this? It's not doing them any good. And if the city wants to keep it in this window, then, I mean, so are y'all saying you'd be open to letting them get rid of it if they could build something that was appropriate for the overlay to go in its place?
Yes, but they, they haven't tried to lease it. You say that, but there's, they, that's not been the path forward. The path forward is just demolish it.
Right. I don't think they've probably pursued it. I imagine they've seen it in this issue here. And I wonder why it even came to this, who brought it up? Is there a process that they were gonna do something and that's why it got here? I just hate to handicap First National Bank of Merton with a building that's ugly. I mean, I hate to say it, but I just, I don't know where you go with it.
Buildings are personal things.
Yes.
That's your personal opinion. Okay, you don't like it. But what you'll like less is a great big asphalt empty lot.
I want to clarify, you said asphalt. Did you say asphalt?
I made sure I said it correctly. Strong emphasis on the P H.
I got it. So.
We can't have more empty parking lots on our major intersections. It is a negative anytime you do that.
I agree with that. I don't want to see a parking lot there, but I want to give them at least the ability to put something there. I mean, if we deny this, does that mean just the building stays forever?
What we said in that document was, until you bring back what you want to do with it.
So they would have to sell it to some, if they don't want to keep it, they've gotta sell it to somebody. That person has to make sure that's approved before the binding can go through. It's a lot of stuff. I'm just calling it like I see it.
We don't like big, black asphalt parking lots on every corner and we got so many of them. After the hour, 6 o'clock, it is not attractive.
I, that's a big ass decision right there that we're gonna deal with.
There you go.
Anyway, I, I just wanted it to be known, my opinion on the 1980s Brady Bunch house there.
We agree. It's not about the design, as he already spent a lot of time talking it about. It's about big, black asphalt parking lots. Tommy.
Hey, man.
We got millions of comedians out of work and everybody up here is cracking jokes.
Everybody needs a straight man.
Aaron, do we have any earthly idea, if the building is not allowed to be demolished, have they even given us a hint? I think the answer's no, but I hadn't heard this clearly. Have they given us a hint of what might happen? If, is it just gonna stand there and deteriorate?
I think there's a potential for that. They do have potential, since this is a larger lot on this side, to develop something there. And that, they have mentioned, well, that may become parking at some point. We have not seen any definitive plans. They have not gone to design. And so it could just be real estate property that they own and maybe they sell off. It could be something, because as you know, and you can barely see it here, their, their main bank is right there across the alleyway behind. That faces Tuig. So the question is, I don't think they would redevelop a new bank there because of that building hopefully is satisfying their needs. Now, they might develop a drive-through bank there. But again, that would be three lots and so there's a lot of space, but I'm not sure if that, that happens or not. There's nothing that we can do from a city standpoint. As the mayor said, if the, if the building's demolished, we can't require them to rebuild on private development.
And at what point then, if it just remains and nothing is done, then if it, I guess, devolves into a dangerous building situation?
Then we would turn that over.
Then we've got some recourse if it, if it is deemed a dangerous building by our fire marshal.
Correct. We would turn that over to the fire prevention team. They would work through that. I'm sure there's always a chance that people break into the structure. Hopefully that is not the case. And I know the, the bank is gonna do the very best they can to secure it and monitor it. I mean, they're very close. But it is, you know, just like as banks own properties, they will find something to do with it over time.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes. Larry?
I have a couple of comments. When I drive down Boa Guard, that is the most eye-catching piece of structure. The other ones, those Art Deco ones, they just don't intrigue me as much as that building, okay? In the 50s and 60s, we tore down a lot of-
Our era, not yours.
Yes.
Okay.
That was rude.
I'm making sure I understand you. I want to have an understanding.
Where's my turn of thought on this?
You like the way the building looks.
He said a lot of buildings were starting to be demolished in the 50s and 60s.
We've torn a lot of buildings down on Boa Guard. We put up steel and glass. To what end? It destroys our heritage to just take them down. That building, as you're describing, is close to 70 years old. I feel for the person who purchased it, but they certainly should have considered what would happen along the way before they resold it or leased it out or whatever. That was their bad business mistake, I guess. And it does have a beautiful tree in front, ma'am.
There you go. You know, we have the DHRC for a reason. They voted six zero to deny the demolish. We have that group that is specifically responsible, Design and Historic Review Committee. They voted six zero to not allow it to be demolished. Just saying. Yes, Tommy.
Aaron, can you give us staff, you talked about it a little bit, but can you, maybe expand a little bit more on staff? You grappled with it, it sounds like internally. Can you give us a little more insight as to why staff came up with, recommend to demolish?
Yes, I think I can. So within our historic, our last historic survey, they categorized hundreds of buildings in our downtown proper of high, medium, or low. This property came back as medium. And to Larry's point, it's getting, it is to that point that, yes, it would qualify as a historic structure based on its age. And it is a description, as they even said, of the, a medium contributor to the mid-century style. And so the challenge for staff was, if we allow this demolition to go forward and with DHRC still being able to see what may go back there, they still have the authority to make design decisions. However, that's the challenge for us, is on one side, we, we are very controlled by how do we allow development to move forward in a quick manner? And how do we still preserve our history and particularly our history that is on the edge of our downtown, going to our downtown? That is a struggle sometimes for staff and me included. And so we struggled with that. And so we erred on the side of, okay, well, if we allow this, if this was, and that's why we've kind of put that condition in there, is that it couldn't be torn down until DHRC approved the design and they got their building permit. That still is not a guarantee they're going to rebuild. And so there is a risk of the demolition taking place. That's as close as we could get without saying, okay, we, we think it should not be demolished either. Had this been in the historic district, not the downtown district, I think our decision would be different. Had this been a historically designated building or a high contributor to the historic area, we would have said, no, this, we would have agreed firmly with no demolition. And so that's, that's the challenge for staff. I'm not saying that we are 100%, you must allow them to demolish this, but it's, it was worth, they asked for the appeal. We bring it forward. We bring this, present this to this group and let, let democracy take its place.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Mayor.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We did have one person sign up, Jamal Schumbert. It looks like he stepped out, but I just wanted to be sure and give him an opportunity.
All right. So with that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of denying, I gotta make sure. So if you want the building not to be torn down, vote yes. Is that correct? It's what I'm trying to figure out how-
The motion was to deny the request for demolition and uphold the DHRC vote.
That's the motion. That's the second. This is the vote. All those in favor of, so you'd vote yes. All those in favor of upholding the denial, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
I'm a team guy.
Some seven to zero. I didn't hear any nays.
We're a team player.
We're a team player. Thank you for your support and for ensuring our heritage moves forward.
I have a bunch of cars that are this same age that we should protect too. My God, 70s models.
See, it was only medium. It wasn't even low. And if we start tearing down all the buildings built in the 70s, I got one on the corner of Chadburn and Boa Guard that's one of the uglier buildings in-
It's prettier than that one.
No, it isn't. And that is moving on. So we'll move on to our closed session. Executive session on the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551. Open Meeting, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement that Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections. Section A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding The Following Tracks Of Land. One, 202 acres out of A-8138, South-20J, West Johnson Survey. And two, 141.67 acres out of A-4018, S0019, WCRRCO Survey. And B, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Property At The Intersection Of 47th Street And Crockett Street. And Section C, Section 557071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Legal Issues With Annexation. We are now adjourned for our closed session. This meeting is called back officially at 10:36 a.m. on this January the 21st. As a follow-up to our executive session, I'm going to read item AI. Consider Accepting An Annexation Petition For 1,205.573 Acres Of Land Out Of The Following Surveys And Abstracts. Abstract-4018S-0019, Survey WCRR Company Being 141.67 Acres. Abstract-4019S-0021, Survey WCRR Company Being 7.9 Acres. Abstract-8138South20J, Survey WJohnson Being 200.11 Acres. Abstract-3945S-001, Survey EJ Werthen Being 113 Acres. Abstract-5145S-004, Survey TJ Smith Being 528.893 Acres. Abstract-8134S-0010, Survey JW Johnson Being 194 Acres. Abstract-8134S-0010, Survey JW Johnson Being 117 Acres. And Abstract-4984S-002, Survey JA Ingolston Being 3 Acres Under The Ownership Of The City San Angelo. Tom Green County, Texas, Generally Located South Of Highway 6, US 67 Between Harriet Road And Highway US 277 And Highway US 67 Interchange And Setting A Public Hearing On The Annexation For The Public, I mean, sorry, for the February 18th, 2025 timeframe. Aaron, you're on.
Yes, ma'am. This is a petition that is coming forward from the city of San Angelo to annex the 1,205 acres approximately out of all of those abstracts and surveys. That would bring that into the city limits. We are asking to set a public hearing for the annexation on February the 18th, 2025 here at City Council.
May I have a motion?
Motion to accept the annexation petition.
That is made by Karen as a motion and seconded by Larry. Any public comment? None. So we will take a vote. All of those in favor of accepting this annexation petition, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item B is consider approving various board nominations. Animal Services Advisory Committee, Jaton Geese, SMD 5, To A First Term Ending January 2027. Tax Incremental Reinvestment Zone, Trey Holmes, SMD 3, As Chairman Of The Board For A One-Year Term Ending January 2026. And The Planning Commission, Liz Albert, SMD 4, To A First Term Ending January 2027. May I have a motion for approval?
So move.
So move by Harry, seconded by Lucy. Any public comment? Sorry, did you have a second or did you have a question?
I had a question, ma'am.
Well, we have a second. Now you can ask the question.
I'm, I'm concerned, somewhat concerned over the gentleman for the chairman-
I'm concerned, somewhat concerned over the gentleman for the Chairman Of The Board For The Tax Incremental Reinvestment Zone. As I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong, but he's a resident of Costoval, and I don't see where there's a significant vested interest in him applying for this job.
I think there is some concern there. And so, question mark is, do we want to approve that today, or do we want to do a little more investigation and ask some more questions concerning it?
Please.
You want to postpone it? Okay. So with that, let's do the Animal Services Advisory Committee and The Planning Commission appointments.
Move approval of those two appointments, Mayor.
All right. Seconded by Lucy. No public comments, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes to approve the Animal Services Advisory Committee and The Planning Commission. Okay, Item C, Announcements In Consideration Of Future Agenda Items. Are there any?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
I don't know if we need a report or whatever. Not frequently. Every now and then, just drive all over town looking at stuff. So I was driving through, yeah, speaking on Tom Day. So is anything going on at Kirby Park? Any activity? I didn't see anything.
Or the 29th Street complex?
29th, yeah, project. Is anything going on?
The contract has been initiated, and so the contractor should have a notice to proceed at this point. They'll start with the dirt work first, but Al was checking on a timeframe in which they thought they would start turning ground.
Okay. Maybe a Friday memo or something.
Well, I think with...
Yeah, and Tom has asked for the same thing. But basically, yes, they have, they've got their stuff. The permit is supposed to be totally issued, and he was checking on when they thought they would actually start turning ground.
I think to add to that, there's three things that I think we need some updates on immediately. One is 29th Street Complex, one's The River Stage, and the third one is the animal shelter improvements and relocating in the transitional area, whatever. But those have all been out there a couple of years now in terms of conversations and budget amendments, et cetera. So we need movement, and we need to be updated on all those three projects.
I've asked Al for the River Stage one as well, so we can put all those in a Friday packet.
Good. Thank you, Ray. Move we adjourn, Mayor.
Okay. With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. We are adjourned officially at 10:42 a.m.